Glad to call this meeting in order. Lonnie, would you deliver the indication, please?
Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together and conduct the city business. Lord, we thank you for the beautiful weather. Thank you for all the visitors coming tonight, and the youth group is here. Lord, we ask you for all favors and blessings in your name. Amen.
John, please, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, the agenda has two additions. You have a copy, did they get a copy Lisa?
Yes, it's in the library.
Item B and item C, Section 125 Plan Resolution by Lisa, and Reduce Rate Application also by Lisa. Would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with new changes?
Second.
Motion to the second. Discussion. Being on all paper, will show a hand. Thank you, Counsel. It would be noted, Tony Fountain is not present. The minutes of February 1st, 2016, regular meeting, Lisa.
Regular council meeting Monday, February 1st, 2016. Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. He requests that Councilmember Jim Lenny give the indication. Councilmember John Faust led him to the side of the pleasurable allegiance. Mayor Weaver asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Councilmember Anson Navy made a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Jim Lenny seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. City Clerk Lisa Hall read the minutes of January 6th, 2016, regular meeting. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to adopt the minutes with changes noted from the states and two councilmembers' names in the Appointing of Council Committees section. Councilmember Allison Bulla seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Councilmember Allison Bulla stated that she wished to recognize that members of youth leadership pickings were present at the meeting as part of the program's assignments. There was no old business to discuss. Item A, under new business, Mayor Weaver stated that the city was planning to purchase a grade off for the purpose of clearing the ditches on road and street right of ways. He stated that the purchase would be made from Coke Equipment for a cost of $65,000. He also stated that the equipment included in the city's 2016 budget. Attorney Bill Pickett stated that he would provide the city with a written opinion allowing that the grade off could be purchased with the 2008 blocks funds. Following discussion, Councilmember Anson Navy made a motion to approve the purchase of the grade off from Coke Equipment for $65,000. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item B, under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Finance Director Lisa Hall and Police Chief Greg Level. Ms. Hall stated that the city was in need of two new police cruisers. She stated that one cruiser was budgeted for 2016, but near the end of 2015, the police department had crashed and totaled one of the cruisers, and now was in need of a second. She stated that the city received approximately $20,500 in insurance proceeds for the cruiser. The cost of the two cruisers would be approximately $11,600, in excess of what was budgeted, plus the insurance proceeds. Chief Level stated that it might be less depending on the equipment that could be salvaged from the crashed vehicle. Ms. Hall stated that the police had budgeted for $10,000 in building improvements that could be used instead to cover the costs. Discussion followed. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to use the budgeted building improvements in addition to the insurance proceeds to cover the cost of the two police cruisers. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried by unanimous vote. Councilmember Allison Bulla made a motion to go into executive session, and Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. The meeting was closed. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to come out of executive session. Councilmember Allison Bulla seconded the motion. Meeting was reopened. Mayor Weaver stated that no action was taken during executive session. Councilmember Jim Lenny made a motion to give City Manager Weaver authority to make an offer on a piece of property on the north side of town in an amount not to exceed $10,000. Councilmember Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried by four votes in favor. Councilmember Allison Bulla voted against. Economic developer Jerry Nate McCall gave a report to council. Finance Director Lisa Hall gave the financial report for the month of January 2016. Lonnie Waters gave the animals and patrol report for the month of January 2016. Chief Greg Level gave a report of police activities for the month of January 2016. Chief Steve Roper gave a report of fire activities for the month of January 2016. Councilmember John Faust gave an update on JYSI activities. Being no other business to come to the council, Councilmember Jim Lenny made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Council is scheduled to convene next at the regular council meeting to be held March 7th, 2016.
Entertain a motion. Motion to approve the agenda as read. Just couldn't make that. Minutes.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. Being on all paper, will show a hand. Thank you, Counsel. At this time, I'd like to recognize our guest. Donna, Amy, tell us what you're doing here. Tell us why you are here.
Well, it's been a while since I've been in the city council meeting, but...
But you're always welcome. I know you don't have that much skin.
Especially even though I don't limit the city limits. But, so it doesn't hurt, because of my chamber affiliation, I'm on the board, to attend occasionally. Also, here I brought one of the young youth leadership participants. He did participate as well.
Would you like to tell us, tell the council your name and what grade you're in, and a little bit about what's going on in JYSI? Some brave soul can start, and we'll work our way around the room. We'll start right here, the first one on the left at the back. That's you. Would you stand, please?
My name is Andres Torres. As part of our program in the youth leadership, we have to attend at least one city council or commissioners' meeting, and a lot of us have decided to choose this one. Most of us here are seniors, with the exception of Folsom, Skylar, and Sierra and Jackson, and I'm 18.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. If you would go around the room and each one stand up and give us your name. Thank you for doing the presentation.
Skylar Denton, I'm a junior. Do you need any more information?
That's right. I think it's kind of hard to correct this.
I'm Stacey Stanfield, I'm a junior.
I'm Jackson Lee, and I'm a junior as well.
I'm Brandon Alinafelt, I'm a senior.
I'm Meredith Miller, and I'm a senior.
I'm Chanel Lakeham, and I'm a senior.
I'm Alex Mier, and I'm a senior.
I'm Folsom Proctor, and I'm a senior.
Thank you, and I did this for your benefit, because I understand you have to have a signed agenda to carry back with you?
Yes.
We don't have any agendas, so you're going to have to look at the nopickus.com. Can we take some photos with you? See if we can gather around. And we appreciate you being here. Shall councilmembers, can you kind of gather around?
It's kind of like, you know, you jump through the middle, like this.
Under old business, we have done. Under new business. Matt, you picked a great meeting to come. If you would, item A, Matt Bitwell with a group health insurance.
Good afternoon, everybody. This is, I'm not sure if y'all had this in your package or not, so I'll make some copies. We, our, the city's insurance renews with Blue Cross Blue Shield effective April 1st, and we got the renewal from Blue Cross last week of January, the first days of February, and we had a rather substantial increase on the insurance. Blue Cross was asking for approximately a 30% increase on the insurance, and so we did actually go to market. The size of the city, we have less than 100 employees. In order for us to get a firm bid from an insurance company, we have to have every employee either sign a detailed health statement, all 88 employees, or there's, one of the insurance companies out there is actually Aetna, we actually could give them a detailed census file of all the employees, and they were actually able to underwrite us by going through an actuarial company that could actually look at our pharmacy data over the last two years without any employees having to get involved with a personalized process. And Aetna did the review and came back and said they would ask more than the 30%. So, it kind of gave us a little bit of idea that maybe what Blue Cross was asking for wasn't too bad. But, what we did, I'm going to start on page two, and I'm going to finish the rest of that story. The Blue Cross increase last year, this time a year ago, was 5%. Two years ago, Blue Cross asked for 7%. So, we've been well below trend with Blue Cross. Last year, we had a minimal change on the prescription drug plan, and we ended up with all the ACA changes being put in last year, which included very significantly, all your out-of-pocket expenses for drug copays, medical copays, all now count toward what the insurance companies call your maximum out-of-pocket. Couple of years ago, when the insurance company said your maximum out-of-pocket is this, they were only referring to your deductible and your 20% cop insurance. They didn't consider the pharmacy copays and medical copays to be part of your out-of-pocket even though you do spend it. And so, the Affordable Care Act made them clean that language up. So, last year, if an employee got real sick and hit their maximum out-of-pocket, that meant that from that point on, for the rest of the year, they did not have to pay any copays at the doctor or any prescription drug copays. Everything was 100% coverage. So, those were the changes that happened last year. So, when we got the renewal from Blue Cross this year, we were a little surprised them asking for the 27%, it's exactly 27%, but we did go back to them on several different occasions, and we played our case, and we were able to get the renewal back to something a little bit more manageable, which was a 13.5% increase. And so, we were able to do that without making any benefit changes on the plan. And so, we felt really good with those final numbers from Blue Cross. The dental had an 8% increase, and if you look over to the far right, you can see that the net increase to the city on both those contracts was just about $85,000, $86,000 a year. And our current expenditure on those two plans is about $900,000. It's currently right at about $800,000, and is going to increase approximately about $85,000. And so, that was the renewal history. I've got the details of both those policies on lines pages four and five, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that relates to those, if you have them.
Counsel, I believe we discussed this last month, and we had budgeted 12% increase, so 1.5% increase over what we had budgeted, and the council agreed last month to allow Matt and his crew come in and register everyone and have all that done, but it's still dependent on your vote tonight. So, Matt, you do a little better job preaching this, because I hate to start this whole process again. So, but anyway, any questions, Counsel, to Mr. Bitwell?
In order for us to have gotten a proposal from anybody else, we would have had to have every employee complete a detailed health statement on every one of their families. And one of the reasons we went to Aetna was because they go to a company, and this is, I'll say this this way, it's kind of scary to know what computers can do, but if you have somebody's name, their date of birth, and their home zip code, there's companies out there that can tell you every prescription you've filled in the last couple of years. And so, Aetna contracts with an actuarial company, and literally, the insurance companies feel that if they know every prescription you've taken in the last two years, it tells them who has rheumatoid arthritis, it tells them who has MS, it tells them how low your blood pressure is, it tells them what your diabetes is like. And so, just by looking at the pharmacy component and doing it anonymously, we're able to get a good gauge as to what would happen had we done a health statement on each employee. And so, we went that route, and when they came back saying it was going to be more than what the Blue Cross renewal was, we felt that had we pursued it, anybody else, we would have had to have the employees and, and you really hate doing that. When you put a health statement out there, we keep everything confidential, we have it replying in an envelope, but it's always, it's not always the most pleasant thing to have to sit there and list all your health history down, particularly if you, you know, for your family and kids. We try to do it the least invasive way as possible.
Lisa, the, Matt, that we budgeted 12%, this is 13 and some change, so what would be the dollar amount? Do you run those numbers?
I'm not running them. Well, I did a while back, I don't have them with me. But, you know, we overbudgeted for our other insurance, our liability, kind of workers comp, kind of the way alone. I think from what I had figured earlier, we could have, yes.
I think we also budgeted for other positions.
Yes.
That have not been filled yet. Make up for 1% pretty quickly, I think. We entertain a motion. The 12% is correct, it's what we budgeted.
Yes.
About on dental, what do we increase in?
8%.
No, I mean on the budget, Lisa.
A dollar amount? Yeah, I don't have it with me, don't have it currently, but it's decent. One percent less, it was saying $3,000.
It's not the 27%. We entertain a motion.
So, we take the motion to take the rule with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Georgia. But maybe next year, we might want to set about doing a health plan, be prepared, so we can do a little shopping around and make sure we're not getting any incidents. But like I said, right now, that's a motion, that's it.
Motion accepted, being as presented. Motion is second, any discussion? Being on all paper, will show a hand. Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate the effort. Really do appreciate the effort.
Thank you. And because of the 8% effort here. It's a date sensitive, I'll need to get your signature through the meeting board.
Do you have it now, or you want to do it?
Oh, I'll wait.
Okay. Do you have the document with you now? I did bring it to you, please.
The, we do electronic transfers on all your data, and Blue Cross will do nothing actually, so this is, this is.
Item B, Section 125 Plan Resolution, Lisa.
In your book, I've got a copy of the resolution. This is required from our Section 125 administrator annually, and I just got the paperwork today. I sat down and looked through it. There are three documents here we have to approve, the plan document, the adoption agreement, and the summary plan description. And this is an annual update. I sat down with Stella and went over it with her. The only things that's changed, that, you know, we decided that we determined had changed since last year were some items that require my IRS to change.
And this is for the employees who choose to accept the category?
Yes, it's premium-only categories. They have amounts deducted from their paycheck with the type of health insurance for their families or life insurance.
Would you read the resolution, please?
For City of Jasper, Section 125 Premium Only Plan, plan year ending March 31st, 2017. The undersigned secretary or principal of City of Jasper, the employer, hereby certifies that the following resolutions were duly adopted by the Board of Directors of the employer on April 1st, 2016, and that such resolutions have not been modified or rescinded as of the date hereof. Resolve that the form of amended Section 125 Cafeteria Plan effective April 1st, 2016 is in the business meetings hereby approved and adopted, and that the proper officers of the employer are hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver to the administrator the plan, one or more counterparts of the plan. Resolve that the administrator shall be instructed to take such actions that are deemed necessary and proper in order to implement the amended plan, and to set up adequate accounting and administrative procedures to provide benefits under the plan. Resolve that the proper officers of the employers shall act as soon as possible to notify the employees of the employer of the adoption of the amended plan by delivering to each employee a copy of the summary description of the plan in the form of the summary plan description presented to this meeting, which form is hereby approved. The undersigned, further certifies that true copies of the adoption agreement, plan document, and the summary plan description, approved and adopted, and the following resolutions are attached herewith. And this is the company wording, the Board of Directors would mean Counsel. The secretary or principal would be the mayor.
We entertain a motion to approve the resolution as read. Motion to approve? Motion is second, any discussion?
Just again, let everybody know, there's no cause to the city on this, it's an employee benefit that they paid for. No contribution there.
On all paper, will show a hand. That's unanimous, thank you. And thanks Stella for getting it to you. Did you sign that, or I signed that, correct?
I'll have to ask, it's the secretary or principal, I'll tell you the one.
I think they probably will, my signatures of the council approved it.
I would like you to sign.
We'll deal with that tomorrow. Okay, thank you, Counsel. Lonnie, it's plenty cold. Okay. Reduce rate application, Lisa.
Oh, I have one application for reduced water supply rates, and this person, I'll pass it around, this person does qualify based on her age and her income limitations, and the documents that she provided are attached to the application.
For our guests, what the council is doing is reviewing a application for an individual who meets our standards for low income, and this allows that person to receive reduced water rates. Not trying to keep it secret, it's what we're doing. We entertain a motion to approve?
Lord, we approve the rate reduction.
Motion to approve. Motion is second, any discussion? Being on all paper, will show a hand. Thank you, Counsel. That is all the new business we have this evening, Counsel. We don't want to buy any new vehicles, or old, or anything else. Under Mayor's report, economic developer Jerry Nate McCall. Jerry, it's one of your own agenda, we moved this thing around, I thought for sure you said you weren't going to be here.
I did say that. Excuse me, and then I had a change in my schedule which allowed me to be here this evening, and I'm very pleased.
Glad to have you.
So, first thing I want to show you this evening is that the contract for the traffic enhancement study has been amended to the mayor's satisfaction, and we are currently scheduling the information gathering meeting. This will be the first step in the process. Looks like we'll be able to get that set up by the end of March. Soon after that, a town hall type meeting with public input will be held, and then that will continue forward, excuse me, until we have the results of that study. So, I'm very pleased with that, very appreciative of all the mayor's efforts, I know he put a lot of hard work into it. Also, work at the Drive and Theater location is moving forward with the parcel adjacent to it being cleared. This is the one next to the old Chevrolet dealer there on 515. And even before the theater starts actually coming out of the ground, I think we're going to receive a benefit, boosting the marketability of that old corner, because that parcel they're cleaning up is really kind of an eyesore. Like I said, I think we're going to get a return on that even before the theater starts coming out of the ground. Entertainment opportunities have ramped up as well. We have another visit by a location scout that was working on behalf of a big-name type production. We will also have a producer and director up this Friday. This is the one that will be making the film this summer extensively through the community. What did I say, Ian? What did I say?
No, you did.
Oh, okay. Can I go over it again? I'm sorry. The other thing that's going on is down in Canton, the lady that spoke at our December breakfast, she owns a company called Blue Hare Films, they're the ones they're talking about buying the Jones Building in downtown Canton and turning that into a movie theater, or, excuse me, a movie production studio. And based on the report in the Cherokee Tribune, it looks like that is moving forward and could happen within 60 days. I think that's terrific, even though it's not right here in our community, will provide opportunities for our young people. Matter of fact, one of the individuals with us this evening, I interviewed him as part of the youth leadership process, and he is interested in a career in that field, and based on the young man that donned his glasses before they took his sunglasses, before y'all took your picture, I think maybe we have some others that may be interested in that line of work as well. The last items that I want to share with you this evening, and I talked about it in general terms, but the mixed youth development around the hospital is moving forward. Matter of fact, they have, they produce a marketing brochure, the name of the development, you have Piedmont Village, they've gone out, they've started having some initial conversations with some tenants. I'll be glad to share this with anyone. But this is a really top-notch development. The developer out of the Atlanta area has a proven track record, he has partnered with some local folks, and the mayor's been involved in this process as well. Looking like perhaps some, a new motel.
Do you want to pass that, pass that, Counsel, please?
Glad to. So, this will, this will provide a great boost to our community, and I think we're going to get a great return on it. Last thing, as far as like the motel, right now, we don't even have really a motel that could host a small group type meeting because of the facilities, you know? Having something new come in, certainly around the hospital, and a quality type development, I think will really help us in that arena. So, I'm very pleased with that, and that's all I have this evening, unless there's some questions that I can answer.
Questions, yes? This document these passed around is a plan of a meeting that I attended today, even though the players in this project are the ones that produce the hospital and the apartments, so of course that being Mr. Copeland, has the hospital working with them as well as the developer with quite a planned unit development. If it were to happen, it would be a great thing, but that don't mean it's going to start going up tomorrow, it's still a lot of economic issues before us, but are before them. And, but, this is why when Jerry reveals too early and it don't happen, it's just more lip service, I guess would be a good word, Jerry.
Well, my understanding is, Mayor, they're going to put a sign up there next week, so...
They better not.
You gotta try to get ahead of the curve.
Are you serious?
Yeah.
Are you serious?
I still don't trust signs, either. I still don't trust signs either until I see construction taking place. But anyway, that being said, the council and the public has some information as what's going on. And there's other developments that's much like this, but they're not ready to come out of the... There's activity taking place, and it's been several years since we've had this activity that I'm referring to. But anyway, thank you, Jerry.
That's my pleasure.
Thank you. I know these architects are very upset.
Do you really? Financial report, Lisa?
In your packet, you have our financial report for February 2016, two months of the year. We received in February sales tax in the amount of $75,848, which is normal, I guess, for January. It's usually a lot lower compared to last year. We received $79,600. We did receive our check from Georgia Power for our franchise tax, and it was $10,000 greater than prior. The check was for $280,900. We typically get that. In our SPOLOX fund, we received around $59,000 in January, and that was for February sales, in February for January sales. That brings us to our 2014 SPOLOX cash account now has $594,000 for paving projects. And that does, we also deposited our LEMID money. We received that hit last month to a $55,000.
$55,000.
The 2008 SPOLOX, we bought the gray doll last month, so we still have a balance in that account, $41,300 for paving and other street projects.
Any question? Any questions, counsel? Okay, thank you, Lisa. Lonnie, animal control and other.
Getting married, counsel? It looks like spring is coming and the animals are starting to come out, so my calls are picking up again. And you see, we've been averaging about three or four bad calls a month, and this month it's up to 10, so nothing elaborate this month. That's about all on animal control.
Okay, Lonnie, let's talk about paving for a moment, counsel.
Okay, we have sent in the ad for paper. It will be coming out this week. We have an April 13th bids in here for anyone that wants to put in bids. And so we're hoping that we'll have several companies that will put in a bid as we have in the past. And that gives them, you know, around 45 days or something to get their bids prepared.
Explain to them where this is at.
Okay, our first project for this year will be Hood Park, all of Jeanette and Hood Road there, and then the, all the streets inside Arbor Hills will be resurfacing those. There will be some milling going on because of the curbing, uttering, and we will be having to buy risers to put on all the manholes in the center of the streets and valves and things like that, so that will be coming up too in the near future.
Tell a little bit about the decel lane going on in front of the school.
Okay, we, I met with the DOT. They had told me two weeks ago that the decel lane in front of the old high school was not going to happen. There was no money allocated for it. Within about three days, all of a sudden, they found a little over $2 million. And so now they have called and it looks like it's going to happen along with other projects in other areas, county and other counties around us. So it looks like that we're in the process. We do have to move a gas line. There is a gas line there in the right of way, and we will have to move some civil water line.
And also, this line is not going to happen this year like we thought it was going to happen in May. It'll be sometime in fall, probably later before we get the gas line relocated. And we were thinking that it might be able to go and cop the gas line, but that's not going to be the case, so it's going to be a 2017 quick response project, so. At least it's still in play. And of course, what's still in play is concerning the DOT is the major project that Wyden 53 coming in. You think I'm lying?
Well, last Friday, we met with GMA and FEMA
Yes.
About cleaning the sediment out of the stream, Cold Creek. And I met with two of the county employees today. And then Thursday at 1:00, Lisa and Stella and David Hall and myself are going to meet with a representative for GMA just for our project. And we're going to see if, how much money, if any, we can get to assist us on this. And then also, they're going to see if they can speed up the permit because they have physically went out and looked at and seen the necessity of getting the sedimentation out of Cold Creek.
And of course, counsel, that's a project that we have applied for over a year ago now, and have paid engineers and engineering consultants to get us through the maze of the Corps of Engineer and the EPD, mainly the Corps of Engineer. Hopefully, this storm that we had is going to expedite the process, and hopefully, we'll be able to do this. Only thing that bothers me is that we're going to have to only be able to do 40 feet or some sort of amount of footage above the intake, and the entire creek needs to be improved. That's going on, and it's very big. Thank you, Lonnie. And in addition to that, we met today with... I'm sorry? Go ahead, Lonnie. I got this totally different. The gas line relocation?
Yes.
Is it involving the board's property?
Yes.
Is there any value to doing it in the summer while the schools are out?
Well, by the time we get everything lined up and everything and get it approved and figure out who's going to pay for it and all that, it's probably going to be toward the end of school anyway before it could happen.
Well, the project is a $200,000 project that they're leading to, and we're going to work with the gas company to get it moved. So probably scheduling the timeframes is going to be a guess. It could be too kind of anything, but that would get to be a slow response.
I thought I heard that it would be at least fall before the gas line was moved. And if there's any way, make sense to try.
It might be on Christmas break.
I think so, right?
Okay. Generators, we've, of course, got a $361,000 FEMA grant. That's what that's a...
Yeah, we're responsible for 15 of that, 2% of that.
361 and 371. 371, I remember, 361. Anyway, we talked to the engineers today on the phone, and we have the bids ready that will be, we will actually take the, through the bids April 12. So with that, we'll have more generators than we could ever imagine to be able to afford our water facilities. Okay. Police report. Chief Hope?
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. City of Jasper, Bush Park for the month of February responded to 745 calls from 911 Center, responding to 47 motor vehicle wrecks, which have total of 36 citations for the following, 22 for speeding, two for shoplifting, one miscellaneous, and one suspended over buck. Georgia State Patrol issued a total of 44 for a total of 80 citations in the city for following state warrants for taking, two for possession of F and M felony, two for possession of patrol substance, three felony disorder conduct misdemeanor, property of entertainment and patrol substance felony, property detained and patrol substance misdemeanor, one felony obstruction, one shoplifting felony, one aggravated stalking felony, one terrorist threat felony, one disorder conduct misdemeanor, and one set by taking auto. Miss Lane's calls responded to 27 wrong calls, 23 disorderly, nine harassing calls, investigating two burglaries, five trespassing and ordering calls, 63 suspicious activity, and 18 domestic disputes.
Questions, counsel? Questions, Amy?
I'm laughing at Steve. He can, he don't wish for good.
Okay. Thank you, Greg, and John. Greg, update on the cars? Oh, we got, hold on one minute, Steve. We got business up here. How's Steve?
Yeah, Steve, we got business happening.
Tell them about the cars.
Cars, I asked Major Jim Leach to go over and check on the cars coming, and he said every time he goes over there, somebody different, but they're ordered and we're waiting on going out of D4 already.
We're getting a little salad, the old, I just complain with the salad.
Well, about the radio is about the only thing. The cage is built for a Dodge, and of course, for the blue lights, ain't going to fit on Ford's Ford, different roof. About the only thing is the radio, so.
Okay, John, thank you for bringing that up, but let's talk about traffic, parking citations. Tell the council what's going on from your perspective, what a freeze frame, Amy, since you were here, and it was your downtown, it was your downtown alliance meeting that we had this, point of order, we'd like to discuss this just a moment.
Sure.
Before I turn Mr. Lovell loose. Tell the council, if you would, what happened at your downtown alliance and why we're having this conversation today.
There were several requests made during last month's downtown alliance meeting that there were still continuous some problems with the merchants experiencing parking, especially during court house, the court weeks, court sessions, and employee parking in front of their businesses, their own businesses, thus not allowing people to park in front of their retail businesses. And they were pretty adamant that they, the merchants wanted to see some action along with a couple of handicap parkings.
Okay. And so I told, I spoke out of order that evening, which I don't think we're going to need any action, and why I do want to have it as a topic for action, but I did come back and ask the chief of police. I said that night, tomorrow, there will be citations written for over to our parking, which we have clearly marked on Main Street. I realized we didn't have any parking tickets. It's been a while, and our parking tickets that we had were obsolete.
They were printed one before I was born. I was born in 66, I was born in 65.
So anyway, I... So anyway, what we've done is the parking violation, tell the council what you're doing, Greg, as far as getting something that we can use for...
I was down, met with Canton Police Department, they used to be hot and heavy on parking. They don't do it anymore.
Can we borrow their ticket just a moment?
They don't do it anymore, and of course, Ed Lacy, chief of Blue Ridge, I mean, they don't do it, Johnny Cersei, chief of Blue Ridge, they don't do it, Calvin Moss, Woodstock, they don't do it, so.
Why not? They didn't tell you why? They haven't been to a downtown alliance meeting? Okay, go forth.
But anyway, so I'm in the process of ordering up some citations. I discussed with the mayor, got kind of Canton's, where my sister's sitting down there. Their fines are about $20. The old citation is, it says 50 cents, and you got to put it in the red box located at the fire station, which is now Harold Hendley Mutter car. You remember that on the... So they're very obsolete, and $20, $20. It is, it's like Ms. Amy discussed, it is sporadic. It's only when they have courts, because you come through there when there's no court session, and there's plenty of parking. But like Amy said as well, some people park in front of their business all day. And there's numerous parking violations that are out there that people that walk on the wrong side of the road. There's the J-turn issue up there. We don't want to over-police the City of Jasper. I mean, go over there and take my gloves off. I mean, we will, but I know the mayor's not going to do that. But we're in the process of ordering some parking citations, and possibly the mayor discussed, maybe a part-time civilian employee, kind of like a meter maid that they have in Atlanta, you know, civilians do it in Atlanta, not sworn personnel. We are taking steps currently to try to ratify the parking problem.
So counsel, when you get the phone calls about someone that you know who gets a citation, you've been warned that we're about to defend the ordinance. But anyway, with that being said...
And we discussed, mayor, also, maybe when we do implement it and start doing it, maybe giving out warnings for the first week or so, and maybe run a little ad in the paper, post it on our Facebook, and then after that, we're going to do $20, and if you don't pay it in certain time, we'll put a collection agent telling you like these other big agencies do, so. That'll ding your credit, I promise you.
Thank you, chief. Chief Hope?
Mayor and counsel, for the record, all I said was when Chief Lovell...
Chief counsel, do you?
When he finished his lengthy report, I simply said, "I'm a partridge in a pear tree."
No, not you.
For our guest tonight, the city's fire department covers a district outside the corporate city limits, so when you hear numbers referred to as inside and outside, that's referring to the corporate city limits or outside the corporate city limits. Okay. For the month of February, the city's fire department responded to 120 calls, and those were no structure fires inside the city limits, three outside, no vehicle fires in or out, one grass fire inside, two outside the city, 10 motor vehicle accidents with injuries inside, two outside of the city, 53 emergency medical responses inside, 35 outside, 10 other calls in, for, out. Other is basically anything you did not hear me list, the odd stuff that's not listed. As of the end of February, it was 232 for the year. Fire inspection looked at two sets of plans for renovation and conducted 14 inspections.
Questions, counsel? Thank you, Steve. John, quick update on JYSN?
Well, police policy is about to kick in full speed. City's been really busy. Go by a little, see they've painted a dugout, they've paved the pavilion. See if there's going to be some plans, maybe for concrete for, for the pavilion, which will be a good thing. So wide open. Also, too, Chris Williams' son, Isaiah, which was one of our riders, won a state yesterday for the second time.
Wow.
That's a good thing, that's a real good thing, so. JYSN's going strong.
What weight class is that?
Actually, he's one of the bigger boys. I'm not exactly sure about his exact weight, but I think it's 120, which is, for his age is pretty big.
Thank you, John. Since we have guests tonight, Amy, we'll pick on you again. Give the council a little update on the downtown alliance, and you actually have camera on you tonight, so if you think you say, Ken, will you be helping?
I was not prepared for this. I apologize.
You're very good.
Thank you for calling me out on it. The only update, Jerry did it just magnificently just a moment ago. I'm under the assumption that we're ready to move forward with our transportation study. Hopefully, we can get that maybe the end of this month started, and then the next month have a town hall meeting, youth, everybody is invited to that. We're going to try to work around some traffic issues that I hear that we have in downtown Jasper. Mayor Weaver can attest to some of that, how we can get the traffic downtown, get them back out, get them from all, like he says, turning in front of Jasper Drugstore, get them moving around, and that'll be our first step in downtown, what we hope is downtown revitalization and...
And they did, they did come up and meet with me the other day.
Mom lived. I don't know the correct term, I'm sorry.
They did come up to meet with me, and I gave them the infamous ride through town, and...
The same one?
The same one, same camera, same location. And they, I feel like they felt the pain. Of course, the traffic wasn't over, it wasn't before 11:00 or 12:00, so it was moving fairly well. Of course, the traffic wasn't over, it wasn't 4:00 or 12:00, so it was moving fairly well. So looking forward to their plans. They asked me for my drawings and I refused to give them to them because that's why we hired them, because I was ashamed of mine. So anyway, they're going to be looking forward to their progress. Any question on downtown project, counsel? The, the property that the council approved last month for me to pursue, we have a contract and we're waiting on the closing. We do have most of the easements promised. Lonnie, if you would, address that a little bit and tell the council a little bit of what we're running into.
We were getting easements for the golf cart path, walking path from the Arbor Hills up to Chambers Street, the Woodbridge area up in that area. And most everybody that I've discussed it with has burglary said, yes, they'd be willing to sign the easement and let the city do this. We do have one family that has chosen not to, so we're going to look at a different alternative to go maybe across the railroad track into an industrial park or something and do it that side, so.
We've not heard anything from the grant yet, have we?
No, not yet. I believe so. I mean, no.
So anyway, thank you, Lonnie. Counsel, have anything they would like to add? If not, we entertain a motion.
We appreciate it.